When you mute your microphone, you can press star six to unmute. You are unmuted.
Good evening all, I'd like to call this Page County Board Supervisors Regular Meeting to Order at this time. I notice all members are present or on the way. Mr. Vaughn has called and said he'll be here within a few minutes, so we're going to go ahead. And we begin this evening with a moment of silence in our District Two. I'll have Mr. Lattaback if you'd lead us into the moment of silence and then also in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Also, before we do a moment of silence as part of it, I would hope that everyone just take a minute, although we're a few days after the fact, to remember the events of September the 11th.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lattaback. And we begin with the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion or any comments about that? To adopt the agenda for this evening?
Mr. Chairman, maybe we adopt the agenda as stated.
We have a motion by Mr. Strup and a second by Mr. Guzzi to adopt the agenda as is presented to us. Any questions from the board or comments about that or any changes that need to be added? Hearing none?
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaback?
Yes.
Mr. Strup?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
All right, we go to a public hearing on a special use permit for Leona Dean and I open the public hearing. At this time, it's five minutes past the hour. And we'll begin with Mr. Lattaback to review and give a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Leona Dean has applied for a special use permit to operate a home occupation for a hair salon at property located at 2980 Leeksville Road in Lourey. The parcel contains 2.4 acres and is currently zoned as agricultural. She's proposing to operate the hair salon and an accessory shed that is already located on the property. It's roughly a 30 by 25 in size. However, she is only proposing to use about a 16 by 12 area of the shed for the salon. According to the Page County Code 125-10(c)(3), home occupations are permitted by right. However, under 125-15(b)(1e), it says that any home occupation conducted out of an accessory building requires a special use permit. Hence, the reason that she has submitted the application. She did consult with VDOT. VDOT does not have any objections. There's no impact to the state road. The Health Department has signed off on the request as well, along with the building official. I will note, he's already been there and done his inspection, and she actually does not need any permits or anything to convert the hair salon. I won't read the comprehensive plan portions. It is provided in your memo. I do feel in general that it is in compliance with the goal of the comprehensive plan. The Page County Planning Commission held a public hearing on August the 25th. They recommended unanimous approval onto the Board of Supervisors. There were no objections from adjoining property owners. Any comments that we did receive have been provided in your packet, and I'll note that they were the same ones that we got the Planning Commission public hearing, and there were no objections. She will be required to obtain a Page County business license, which she's aware of. She has been provided a copy of the SGP conditions, which are attached to the memo, and I don't have any further unless you guys have questions.
Questions for Ms. Lattaback? I have one. This is an existing business, actually, in its own way. She has been in some form of business there at that location, informally?
Informally. I think she did it for her family. I don't think it was something that she opened up to the public and now she would like to.
And this is outside the building, and the issue of the Health Department has signed off, but the issue for customers using a bathroom, is there a bathroom there in the house?
There's a bathroom in the house, yes.
And that's the bathroom that the customers would use? Well, woman, oh.
We would hope. I don't think the Health Department required.
A bathroom?
There's a bathroom in the shop.
There you go.
There is a bathroom in the shop?
Yes, there is.
And it's served by the same septic system?
Yes.
As a house?
Yes.
So they ask, have there been a couple of these special use permits that had no facilities whatsoever?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to hear that. Any other comments or questions from the board? Or any citizen comments?
No, none received.
Okay, close the public hearing. And it's now seven minutes after the hour. Any comments or questions from the board before we take it to a vote?
I'm pleased the Page County Board Supervisor approved the special use permit for Leona Dean, the operator of the hair salon, has a home occupation with the attached condition.
We have a motion by Mr. Foles. Was there any other member of the board that had any questions before we go? Okay, we'll take a second. Second by Mr. Vaughn. Okay. And further comments?
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lattaback?
Yes.
Mr. Strup?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We come down to public comments on agenda items. Do we have anybody signed up?
We have one speaker, Stuart Carlett.
Okay.
It's nothing back to agenda. I have a problem with some poultry being in my yard.
Is it at the very end? Do you want to move that?
Run it to the end behind me.
Oh, yeah, right. In the next public comment period, shortly. Okay, thank you very much. We have action matters. Are there any others at all? Nope. Okay. We have action matters now, a special entertainment permit for pre-war swap meet. Ms. Lewis?
Good evening, gentlemen. In front of you, you have another event. I'm afraid to bring it to you. This is the Model T Racketeers. It's a local group, and they've been meeting and doing Model T activities for many years, but they've increased the event by adding the swap meet. So that took it over their 100 attending limits, so they're required to get a festival permit. So in front of you, you have the dates, October 6th through the 8th. It's the Mid-Atlantic Pre-War Swap Meet over at the VFW. They'd like to do another event in May, same type of event, also at the VFW. The background, yes, this is a local car enthusiast group. Participants will also be car enthusiasts, and the concessions will be provided by the VFW. They have a COVID plan in place that's been vetted with the Health Department. I don't see any physical impact, fiscal impact to the county, although it will bring in some visitation. If you have any questions?
So they will stay on site?
Yes. No, 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 they're not going to stay on site camping. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
No.
Even though they're setting up their stuff, they're staying off-site?
Yeah, I asked them if they were going to do any camping, and they said.
And if we agree to this tonight, I think it needs to be in the permit that all advertisements, all tickets, everything else should have the face COVID and the rule, you know, the follow-up procedure, where we've already had an issue where we've had the yes, and we do not have that out there. So I know what Ms. Muller and you put together to give to them was fine, but on their documentation, they weren't even referring to this event is going to follow COVID rules.
Right.
And I don't see how that's, I mean, so we give them a whole thing of this is what you need to do, and they took it and said, I mean, they're going to have a sign when you drive up, but if they're advertising it, and if they don't advertise it, then I don't see how they're going to comply. So that's my biggest thing. We found out that that's not going on currently for the last thing we approved.
And I can state that in the letter I send back to them, saying, hey, let's put that in your advertisements.
It shouldn't be online. It shouldn't be print. It shouldn't be anything unless it says we're following the Virginia State.
And I think that's what it, yeah, I think they have one ad that's out now and it does state that.
It did now. It didn't originally, right.
You know, their pre-Civil War ads?
No, I meant their picking, the other.
Yeah, that's a separate event.
I know, I'm just saying.
On this comment, so the COVID-19 plan that was attached, and of course, in the first round, I did not see, I saw that it was attached, but it wasn't attached, and I want to thank you for sending it.
Right.
However, is that our plan that we gave them?
That's the plan that they went to the Health Department with.
So why did they not have it on the, you know, it's almost like, it's sort of like a smokescreen for me that, oh, thank goodness, thank goodness they did this. Well, because the last one, the Pickers out of the VFW, there was no mention of it anywhere, okay, other than in email shared between a couple people, and we're going through that, but nowhere. And I went out there just to look. They had not a mask anywhere. People camping in the parking lot.
Like our Walmart.
No, they don't park, well, they do park in the Walmart parking lot, too. But I mean, I think that this should be, this should be the last time we even deal with any event that doesn't have as a, I mean, every school, every, you know, the colleges, to get into Walmart, okay, I mean, I would say that let's not see on the agenda, again, anything that isn't 100% upfront by the, not from our side as being police folks. We're not policing this. I felt out of place going down to the Pickers to see what it looked like, and it looked like, looked like a nice event on a regular sunny afternoon without COVID, you know, pre-COVID. There's nobody was bad, nobody. But you can't get into Parmark, you can't get into Walmart. They can't go from these things and drive down to Walmart and not get in, and get in without a mask on. So I would just like to say, you know, it just, you know, I don't have any authority, but I won't approve the agenda in the future without full understanding that the people who are putting the event on are caring for the attendees and caring for the people who are putting the program on. And that's just my say. It's my two cents, and but I say I will not approve an agenda in the future.
Yeah, and they.
So I'm forward to hear that there's no mention in their flyer or their advertising or whatever.
There is. They recently put an ad out. It was in one of the, I guess, one of the enthusiast magazines, and it says, note, this event is subject to Virginia COVID-19 recommendations. It can be canceled at any time if the virus situation changes.
Perfect.
We will provide periodic status updates on their website.
Perfect. That's exactly, that's what we need. We need, but we need to feel very, very confident that this is being taken care of by the people who are putting on these events. They're great events, okay, and we love that and going on while we think we do until something blows up.
Do we need more than that, Mr. Guzzi? Do we want more than?
The plan that you all put, the stuff that you put, you put on their permit, and then now this requiring on their advertisements, I'm fine with. I think that, I mean, obviously what we did last time was a good step, but now we found out there was advertisements without that on there, and I think that needs to be stated for us.
I'd like to see the mask, the social, I mean, I'd like to see those icons and we can ask. I'd like to see that.
You can put proper signage in the permit, right, that proper signage has to be placed. And all that's fine. I just think when they're advertising it, they should have the COVID-19.
And the plan is excellent. Mr. Foles?
They've had this event before, haven't they?
Yes, never this big.
So they put over the number.
Right. The only question I have with it, if something would happen and be a bad ad breaking the state or something like that, that the state supersedes our permit, you know, I mean, you said 100 people?
That's what, they, they're over 100 people now, so they anticipate to have that, you know.
If the governor voted 50, then they would have.
Oh, yes, yeah. And that's what they say in their statement, too, so I think their disclaimer covers that.
That's in part of the contract, too, then.
Okay.
Yeah. I think, you know.
Follow state guidelines, something like that?
Anything that state does supersedes what we've already.
250, 250, 200, 3,000, is it? Is it really?
But if something would happen, it would go down.
Indoor is 250. Indoors 250, that's, yeah, you're right. Okay, that's one. Yes, yes, yes.
And I tried to send in the latest guidelines, too, from the state.
You put it all out there, but you don't keep yourself. How many people show, how many masks? You have your mask on.
Where is it? Yeah, well, no, you know what? I probably didn't. I was sitting in my truck. I didn't get out of, I did not get out of a walk-in car. I'm not out here to spy.
Well, I know. But what I'm saying is.
Yeah, okay, I have my mask with me.
We put it all in print in all these guidelines.
Well.
But then it's placing.
Nobody's wearing a mask tonight.
I know.
Wore mine, yeah.
I have mine on. I can't.
Was there any further discussion? You have a motion by Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah. We'll supervise the premise, special entertainment permit, and by March it's for two dates, October the 6th and May the 14th, 15th. So this permit's covering this year and next year, correct?
Which I like what you said, because then we can state if the guidelines change, it'll cover their next event.
Yeah, I want to point that out. We're talking about 2020 and talking about 2021.
And you're fine with their advertisement referring to COVID?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Mr. Vaughn?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lattaback. Any further comment or question?
Mr. Lattaback?
Yes.
Mr. Strup?
Yes.
Mr. Bolt?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Guzzi?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience. We go to a Post Ordinance Amendment, the Planning Commission, or Virginia?
Yes, the point tonight is to look at the membership on the Planning Commission. Several members have expressed an interest and wanting to reduce the current membership from 10 to another number. There has to be at least five on there, according to the Code of Virginia, no more than 15. I'm not sure what the bill of the board is, you know, what number you want to reduce it to, but in order to make that happen, it does require a code change to the county code. In order to do that, you have to advertise for a public hearing, or at least at this point, that a public hearing should be held at the 20th.
But I think we determined then that we really don't know if we're, well, you have to research it.
Yeah, there's an issue. You cannot terminate someone's existing office term.
That was my question.
And.
But you could restructure the entire thing, maybe, if you're looking at.
Yeah, I have to look at the question of whether you could restructure the entire board, dissolve in this board and create a new one. I'm not sure you can even do that because you're terminating people's existing term, so.
I would just put it on hold until you can get back to us at the next meeting, then.
What's, what's, what's driving this request?
Not me. I mean, I don't know this.
Well, I can put a pitch set on it and express an opinion of mine.
Lay it out on the table. It's a weird board.
We're paying the Berkeley Group to get our stuff redone, our audences and everything. The way I understand it, the Planning Commission is dragging their feet on these issues and stuff like that. If that's the way it's going to be, we can cut it back to five, maybe we can get something done. But if they keep on dragging this out, it's going to cost us more money than we're going to have to pay the Berkeley Group.
With no results.
Yeah.
I'm totally in agreement. I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we two on our, we two peoples who we.
I think.
At the end of the day, it comes to us. I know that's not the case, but you know, I mean.
Five can agree on something a whole lot quicker than 10 can.
Yeah, that's the problem now. Too many large committees and doesn't happen. That's what's wrong with our broad thing.
You know, if something done on that Planning Commission, if this stuff is presented to, passed and presented to us, it's going to be five people on it.
And I'm afraid the current way of trying to do everything all together over the next year or two is going to be a bigger mess than if we did it in stages. So I think, based on multiple people having concerns, you probably need to come, you know, as your, as our legal counsel, come back to us at the next meeting and say what we can and cannot do.
I can.
And then, based on that, you can let terms run out. You can do, you can do multiple things, but I don't think we have all the stuff behind the story. And then from that, we can make an educated decision.
I think there are some other, there are some other factors that are in play here. One is, there is no, there is no function of planning with authority in that county. There was a planner at one time, and people say all kinds of things about that planner or whatever. Beside the point, that person was hired at the time, probably replaced a planner before them, because that's, it's a viable and critical position in any organization, okay? And Amory Muller is our administrator, and she's not a planner. She, her background is finance, and she's superb job of organizing things and jumping on the things that need to be taken care of. But planning is a very, very specialized process. It takes a person who knows what they're doing, and we have dedicated people, citizens from the county that have been elected, have been appointed by the board, not elected, though, so it might be something different, okay, but have appointed by the board, probably can be disappointing, disappointed.
Unappointed.
Unappointed. No, I meant to say disappointed. But not to make light of this at all, but the Planning Commission has been also tasked with a couple of, a couple of issues of nearly impossible, just impossible. One is the solar.
As a volunteer, as a volunteer.
Let me finish, let me finish. As a volunteer, yeah, anybody, volunteer, the solar, the solar issue, particularly the large, the large proposal out there, the K proposal, that was nearly impossible for the Planning Commission to take part in that, although they did, they did their due diligence. Took a while. And at the same time, there were so many interested citizens that then sort of got a part in offering information and their own research and their own background, knowing, and many times, lots more than any of us do or any half the people on the Planning Commission. So it became really cumbersome. And I think that that's the way, that's the way it appears to me from the outside, that it's a large, large group of people, and we sort of lose our way, because that large group gains other people that jump in with lots of information and lots of, but it slows, it slows it down. And we have no planner. And it's not, it's not our role either to be planners. On the head and hand, it's not Amity's, really.
Mr. Chairman, I follow on that. First of all, I think that we should make clear that it's not reflection on the members of the Planning Commission or anything like that. The point is, is that really, we end up almost tasking them with doing planning.
Yeah.
I mean, and we do need a planner. I think we need that very desperately, because if we're going to be serious about economic development and following on with our comprehensive plan and doing the things we need to do, we need to have somebody that's going to be the lead point on that. And if that is the case, we don't really need as many people on the Planning Commission, because that would personally be picking up some of that load on there. I think it makes sense for us to streamline so we can move forward and get some of the things that we need to be done. Also, if a planner was on board, as things evolve over time, there's always changes to the comprehensive plan or needed to be changes, and we can take it by dress guide as we go along. That way, when we come, we're supposed to be renewing that comprehensive plan every five years, if we have someone on there that's kind of keeping it up to date, it's going to be an easier matter without having to get consultants in and everything else to get us through that process. And it also will tie it very nicely with the zoning and what we need to do in the area.
And what I see of it is, is the planner would draft the ordinance or draft the recommendations, bring it to that commission, and they vote on it. We're asking 10 people to draft legal documents, and then that doesn't happen, and then they go back and they meet once or twice, and this is stretched out forever. I have a question for staff. Tracy, if you don't mind, when we did have a planner, and you go to these meetings and you have a big role and you bring in, you know, applications and stuff like that, did the planner do a lot more of your role in the past that you're doing now? Right, so you're doing that role, which is not really, is it, am I correct? It's not your role?
It shouldn't be.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you for what you've done lately, but I think that we're missing, not only is that person not doing all that work and bringing it to the, to that board to vote, we're pulling you into stuff that, you know, if you showed up and said, this is my application, but yet you've got to do a lot of homework and that somebody else should be doing. You're kind of going to, you know, it's hard. So that's, I think we all have the same thing. I think legal counsel has to find out what we can and cannot do.
Were there other comments?
I'd like to add one other thing, but go ahead. You know, we've neglected to have a firm commitment for a planner. But what drives all that is, this board is elected officials. Our people in this county elected us to give this county a vision and a direction. We haven't done that. Because we hired a planner right today, what are we going to tell him to do? He go out and plan it. For what? That's just like the solar project. Yeah, it was a solar subject and a lot of people's behind, okay? But we haven't told the citizens in this county what we want the planner to do, and it comes from our constituents. And until we have a scope of a project, you know, and it's gone on now for probably 15 years that I'm in, we had the meeting at the VFW, and we had some folks here from Richmond, and they go and say, what do you want? We'd help you do it. We couldn't answer. We still can't answer that question. And until we do that as a board and step up the plate and upset a whole lot of people, because that's what's going to do, not everybody's going to be happy. But until we do that, this county ain't going to get squatted when it comes to economic development. We can sit here and talk about it every night, every meeting we come to, but until we say, hey, we're going to have 100 acres of industrial, and this is what we're going to do, then answer that question. Or we'll have 100 acres of breweries and this, that, until we pinpoint that and almost become a dictator, nothing's going to happen. And that's my three cents for it.
Well, I'll follow up with that. I think that, I'm not, I'm not convinced that the Board of Supervisors is tasked with developing a vision for the county. But it has to be, it has to be in concert with other people, and a planner is one of those people, one of those persons that'll do it, and same thing with the county administrator. And then ideas grow. I mean, the issue of, you know, just designating 100 acres for industrial, you can go over to Rockingham County and see their 100 acres with one building on it. I mean, it's, we don't know.
How much is that?
But a planner who studies the way things develop, that could come with reasonable things that would, you know, that would, that would serve the future. And I just think that it has gotten too cumbersome.
Mr. Chairman, also, I think that the planner on board, looking at the comprehensive plan, can start giving ideas to the board, and the board can move in a direction that makes sense for the county. We should not have to try, six people here to try and come up with some individual division, or a provision. It's going to be hard to enact, and I think it's going to make more sense if we have someone on board that knows what's going on, how to take the comprehensive plan and put it into a vision for the future for this county.
And I keep on forgetting to add, and who knows how to write a plan? And I think we've seen pieces of that along the way. It was one of the county administrators, three ago, something like that, that wrote it beautiful. Much of that existing plan now came from that, that was that iteration. Three county administrators, something like, something like that. So what's the, I mean, this is.
I think the table, table it.
Yeah, this is not a work session, so.
He's tabled. Tabled. He'll have to do his homework, come back to us.
I will.
All right, okay. Do we need a motion to table? Or we, there's no motion?
No, it's not. It's not a motion.
Very good.
Giving the instructions.
But I don't think we should let it go. I mean, that's what, you need to break back. Why don't you back up next to it?
All right. I just saw, just this evening, I just saw the years of the terms of the people who are on there, and they have, they have almost all agreed to terms that are stretched out pretty far from usual.
What's difficult to get into, Bob? Not know that.
No, what I'm saying, these are people who have agreed to serve and, you know, to just change it all over. Yeah, you check it out.
Yeah, some are 2021, some go as far as 2024, so in between are three or four.
Can you add, can you add one more thing of how many years they've actually been on?
I can. I believe most of them are.
Multiple terms, right?
Couple. Most of them are not.
The other thing, Mr. Chairman, I think that is important, is that members of the Planning Commission need to have the training necessary to be commissioners. I know this is a volunteer, but there are certificates that are granted or earned from someone who takes the training. I may be incorrect, but I have my understanding from talking to staff, there's only a couple that over that period of time that have actually gotten that certificate. Now, also, yearly, they're supposed to be going back to follow up on training to get the latest of what's going on in the state and what's happening there. We have to have a board that is fully informed of that, and I think if they don't have to spend as much time doing planning work and other things in regard to some of these issues, they can do the things that would be necessary for them to make the right decisions and go on. them to make the right decisions and go on.
These are the planning processes that are very, very specific to rural, to rural settlements. There's some wonderful textbooks on it. Okay, leave it at that then? Everybody comfortable?
I'd agree with what Jeff said. Somebody in this county has got to determine what, what we want to look like. Somebody. And I think that's this board that needs to come up and say, "Okay, here's who we are now, here's who we want to be in five years, here's where we want to be in 10 years and what that looks like." And it's like Jeff said, it ain't going to be popular to a lot of people, but somebody's got to make that decision. I don't think it's planner, I think it's this board's responsibility to see what we want to look like moving forward.
But to go a step farther, we addressed that with this last, we hired the company to come in. Our, our, our ordinances, our zoning and everything else is 1980s.
It is.
And it's not consistent. And we can't, if we can't get that right, you can't say 211 is X. If 211 is 19 different things, you can't say you can't do X if all the neighbors are going, I mean, so again, so we, right, so let's get that, I think that was a step in the right direction for the board. If you get that right, then you can go say, "We can do this." There was nothing about right, there was nothing consistent. You've got to send a piece of paper back and pick what you wanted your, your property zoned in the 80s, and we said that was smart. So that's not. And so hiring this group and getting this group and maybe a planner and, and, you know, more in economic development, more down the road, a great writer, and these things is in the right direction, but you've got to fix the problem from, that's been here for multiple boards since the 1980s. We fix that, we can go to the next step. So we have that in place, but I'm afraid we can't have them in place and the funding committee not agree for two years and we try to vote on a super package that's so big nobody's going to do it, when we could do it and have done it, should have been doing it in stages.
I see.
And, and maybe we get nine of them out of the way and then one, they want to have a meeting at the high school and there's 500 people show up and they don't, but, but we're, we can't wait until two years to have a meeting and have every group, you know, two people from this one, 400 people from this one. It, it impacts too many people.
Can we change that?
I think we should, because it doesn't make any sense.
You, you just have to give the instruction to Berkeley Group.
And then we have to have public carries for each step, but we can do it in stages versus the super package that, that I think that's not, that's not a smart way to do it. I mean, honestly, that would, that would have been in their lap for a few months, we haven't got anywhere, why aren't we not doing it in stages? Why are we not fixing what we know that needs, again, we're having applicants come from business 340 that want to put businesses in that's not zone business. Why can't we fix that? So I, I, that's my two cents is just do it, let's, let's, and I think that's just telling staff to, ask them why we can't start going it in stages. And in fact, I don't think it needs to be a motion, does it? We just want, we want, let's, let's get some progress, let's fix some things and start going it in stages. That's my two cents.
Instead of waiting two and a half, three years.
None of us, just one and a half, I'm sorry, you're on the board to do it, why can't you, right.
But your planning committee members change all the time.
Right!
And that's why it's important to have continuity on that board, because that, that continuity is important to streamline year after year. And it's, and to me, it should be a continuous revision, updates annually.
Right. But I'm saying, if you, you and Mr. Stroup said, "We're going to do this and you two come together with a wonderful plan, we agreed upon it and then we still put it back to Berkeley Group and we're two years out from being allowed," that's not, I think you need to move forward with stages right away.
Yeah, and I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
The thing about it is, what I gathered, and I wasn't at the meeting in San Diego, but I did speak to folks that went there, and it sounds like there's a vast difference from one end of the county to the other.
Right.
One end of the county don't know what they want. The other county, you know, the other end of the county wants it to stay exactly like it is. Now, that was what deflected and came back to me, because I asked those questions. So that's an indication to tell you, you know, I have a problem with what you just talked about. They'll do a district at a time.
Whatever you got to do.
I'll find District 5 before we put the deal.
I'll do one and let's go. But I'm just saying, you're only got an option, I think, to get people to agree on ones, you understand how many problems are, I mean, Tracy, you've told us many times, we have more than one problem, correct?
Yes.
So are we going to have a super meeting in two years and have it all fixed in one super meeting? No, it ain't going to happen. So we paid, we paid this company how much?
Ninety something thousand.
And it doesn't go through in two years and none of us are still going on, then what do we do?
Well, that 90,000 keeps going.
I know. So let's move it forward in stages, let's get some things accomplished and then you can, and if we have the right zoning and we have the right business areas, then maybe we'll get some attractive some businesses.
I still think we, we need to keep alive the thought of professional, well-informed, well-informed planner.
Absolutely.
It's really, really important and I think, I think that's, I think that's where, where our vision grows from, is for somebody who knows the way things have been, have happened other places, what typically happens in, in rural that is close to urban. I mean, they're, they're, you know, and the cabin certainly didn't, didn't sneak up on us, but all of a sudden we're the cabin capital of the world. Nobody placed that vision out there.
We asked for years how many we had, we didn't know how many we had. So I'm just saying, I mean, that's something, that's something, if we would have a meeting on that, we, we could direct, we could have board reserved.
You've got to tab this, those zoning expectations to our topography of what we have in page standing and also the expectation of the people that are currently here. And then add to that vision where it needs to go. And that, that's, it's got to be part of the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think also we're not talking across purposes really, I think we're all focused in the same direction.
Absolutely.
And I think we really have to have that type of vision if we want, our, our main problem is we can't, Richmond is a huge resource and we're not using it. And we can't go to Richmond and say, "We'd like whatever you can send us." We have to have some idea of what we want and we have to have some idea of how it can come about. So it's going to be a joint effort, but I think the planner is going to be a key component of it.
Yeah, I remember clearly that, that meeting, how the DFW, 2006, 2005, the Lieutenant Governor was here and the, the outcome was pure and simple, they, they couldn't identify a single, well, they could, they could identify only one, it was Town of Luray that had taken that, that big, big step to, to outfit North Fairfax Community College with a, with a satellite camp, center here. And that was the only thing that they referenced when they came away from that meeting. There's only one thing that seemed to, to indicate the future of things being different in the future than they are right now. And they, they probably couldn't have foreseen the cabins and they couldn't have foreseen, they could have foreseen the need for, for a, for a replacement for the, I don't want to say, I don't like to use the word jail, but a facility that is for rehabilitation of folks that have run afoul on the law and particularly tied with drugs and all that. There's a, there's a whole nother piece of our, there's no vision there either.
Well, there is.
Well, I think, I think.
What I'm hearing, there's a consensus of the board to go down the road of a planner, why don't we direct staff to bring us a proposal of what a planner would do to the budget and what, what we have to do and let's, I mean, that's, that's, then we can look at it. Is that fair?
Well, I've, I've talked to the county administrator and we are in position at this point.
But let's have her give the proposal.
To play out the remainder of the year with the personal board and we have the money to fund that.
But we can move things, we can accelerate things if she, I think you could, you could ask the board to put that in the agenda and she could bring us the proposal and, I mean, let's put it in the paper and see if that's a position we can put in.
We would also learn an awful lot from the, from the process of, of interview, of, discussing with, with, with people who have a, a history of planning and, and know about rural planning, planning by design, that was the textbook, planning by design, rural, rural by design, not by design, you know, that's the great, the textbook of, of planning. It would be something to talk to somebody, to a planner about what would they, what they know of us, if there was somebody that wanted a job here in planning, what do they, what would they tell us that we should be doing in terms of functionally, how to get it? Anything further?
That's a consensus.
Very good, very good. Okay, we, we now come to the board and commission appointments, Virginia.
First item is the appointment to the Economic Development Authority. I will note that we do have several vacancies on the authority. However, the Town of Shandor has nominated Jonathan Comer to fill their vacancy to the EDA and if appointed, he would fill a term to expire January 31st to 2024. He also serves currently on the Planning Commission.
I'm going to make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to appoint Jonathan Comer, the Economic Development Authority, to the Town of Shandor for the term to expire January 31st, 2024.
Motion, Mr. Vaughn, second, or Mr. Foltz?
That was a tie.
Tie?
Yeah.
Any, any comment here?
Be an asset to that board. Does the county go well?
Former student of mine.
Excuse me?
Former student. Got a great, got a great draw. I would push, I would push.
So very confident and that he brings the data.
Hearing enough to go for other comments?
Mr. Stroup?
Yes.
Mr. Foltz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Yuzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Okay.
Next, we have the Board of Equalization and we need some appointments to the board prior to the first of the year. The board will need to recommend appointees to the Circuit Court for appointment. In order to be eligible for appointment, each member of the board shall attend the basic course of instruction given by the Department of Taxation. The Code of Virginia says the board must consist of at least three, no more than five members, 30% of which must be commercial or residential real estate appraisers, other real estate professionals, builders, developers, or legal or financial professionals. In addition to that, one alternate member can be appointed in the case of a board with less than five professionals or board members. And if you have five, you can appoint two alternate members. So it's pretty important that we get this board established fairly quickly so that we can get that before the Circuit Court and get them into their training.
Have you asked last year's if they were reserved?
I have not, I didn't know what the.
I think we can start there. I mean, that was a very hard one, I think we, we took the 12 hour, I think if you could ask the ones that were on it last year if they were willing to reserve and then from there, we would know where we stand. Because I think you and I, we both had a lot of phone calls with a lot of people, it was hard to, because it, they meet during the day.
Yes.
So if you have a professional in 20 northern Virginia doing that and selling homes or building homes, and you have a meeting here at 11 o'clock, it's, it's a hard position. So I, I think we, I'd recommend we start there.
We can do that, I can reach out to them and we can.
Five?
And we don't have any right now?
No, because we just, we haven't, but we need to reach out to the past group and see if they're willing to reserve. I think we could, they don't have time, they have two months to.
The last time we had five members and one alternate.
Right. I'd, I'd reach out to the six and see if they're willing to serve, put their names down and bring it back to us.
I, I know that one is not one that's.
Right, but that's, that's where, let's start there.
What, what did you say was, in terms of the number and the number that needs to be certified in a particular way, or standard rather?
All of them need to be certified. 30% of the membership have, have to have one of those professional certifications.
30% of the membership and the membership must be at least?
Membership has to be three to five members.
Three to five members.
They all have to go through the files.
But they all have to go through the Department of Taxation.
So three, three members would be enough of that command?
Yes.
And one of those, that's the question.
One of those, that's the question. My recommendation would be though, if you appoint three, appoint an alternate just in case there's one person that can't sit in on an appeal for a conflict or whatever reason.
But it says a third, a third must be certified, must be a, a professional, right?
Yes.
So it would be W2 of the five, of the two of the three, because one is only.
30, 30% has to have.
Oh, 30%, I'm thinking around 30, 30, 30.
Okay, gotcha. I, I'd start there and if we have three and fives, then we have an idea.
I'll let you know what they say.
Are there more?
Not tonight, you can see at the bottom of the page there, several other vacancies that we have, but we have their names at this point.
District 32.
District 32.
Yes, we do.
And the town's staff.
And the town. The town's working on their nominee.
Okay, we go to consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion. I moved it to the Page County Board of Supervisors to prove that the consent agenda is followed. Financial reports from period of August 1st and 31st, 2020, cash payable checks, payroll checks, payroll direct deposits, and payroll tax-related electronic fund transfers totaling $1,669,348.2 for the month of August 2020 and amendments of August 4th, 2020 and August 18th, 2020.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
I think of a Mr. Stroup.
Coming in late tonight.
He's a good team.
You got the second, yeah, you got the second. You got the second there, okay? Is there any, are there any comments or questions about that? I'd like to encourage folks once again to look at the, at the warrant reports that have very, very specific information about the amount and who's receiving and, and what is for. I really appreciate that, make sure you continue to do it. Any further comments?
Mr. Foltz?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Dr. Phoenix?
Yes.
Mr. Yuzi?
Yes.
Mr. Lauterbach?
Yes.
Mr. Stroup?
Yes.
I noticed, I noticed that we don't have on the agenda here the common citizen comment.
Yes, old business, new business.
Oh, oh, okay. Is there any old business?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know whether this comes under old business or new business, but I wanted to bring the board up to date on a couple of issues. One is on the broadband issue. I had talked, as I mentioned to the board last month, with the CEO of SBC, Shandell Valley Electric, and he was going to present to his board the quote we talked about. He since has called me back and said that they are very enthusiastic about trying to do a backbone down through the county and he's talking very seriously about what we can do and how we can come about. And he says at the end of this month, he's going to be making a, you know, they're going to have a meeting of us in other counties, so we will have to sit down and see what's going on. It is going to be, he said that we are farther along because we're willing to come to the table with money. So I think talking to him and letting him know that he has some dollars to put into the pot is going to be beneficial to us. And so that's one thing is I think very positive, we've been talking about this for a long time, it looks like we might be moving ahead on. The second thing is in regard to the update on the land with Ossie and Furnace, I've had some, we've had some discussion, maybe I've had some discussion on the issue of trying to make that a palatable piece of land for development. And I met with VDOT last week and we looked at what can be done as far as taking that hill down and what they're, they have also cushioned our right of way when they turn. And so we tried to figure out something that we can maybe work out to make some sense to level it out and elevate to make it a flat piece of property that's more interesting to whatever might come forward in the future. So that's where we are on that.
Mr. Stroup couldn't say he don't have any paperwork?
We don't right now.
I said, you couldn't then.
I'm saying it right now.
Also, the location is, it's a per...
This is a per location, and I mean, it's inside of the two-eleven areas, so it's walking distance to the Greenway.
Downtown.
I've been over, please, in there. It's also walking distance to downtown, you know, we buy some of that. And I think we have some great opportunities. We've got to have a piece of property that a company come in, they're going to be, they want to get the ground running, and if they've got to get not only excavating land, but then worrying with permits there, it's going to slow them down a ways in place else.
It's in the town of Lurake, correct?
It's in the town of Lurake.
That's how we talked to them about it.
Yes, I've talked to them about it as well.
Excellent idea. It's wasted land right now. I don't think it's even really being used for that, for that already.
Not much.
Not much.
That's where the church garden, that ain't.
No, but there's not much activity there. You can read in the work report.
It's a little acre ton.
Nine, nine acres.
Just under here.
They buy vegetables. Not a lot, not a lot of activity as it has. Any other old business?
I have this question. Where do we stand on the broadband progress, other than speaking?
Yeah, yeah. I know that Amity has received a proposal. Of course, she's been out of the blue patients since last Wednesday. I'm sure when she gets back in tomorrow, she'll do that, get a copy of you guys, and bring it up to the next board meeting.
I think she's Josh from RIS, the School Department, everybody's been working with that, with the company to have a proposal. And I think if we can have it on the agenda next meeting, we can look at it. I think the thing about that is we have the opportunity for once to have something that we initiate and do. In the past, we took a grant and we handed it to a large company, and they came in, and we had nothing to this day to show for it. So I would, I would be excited about finding out what we can do with the money and see it. But I think based on what I've been told, Amity has it, and she will try to get it out to us and have it on the agenda. So that's, I'd be excited.
That's definitely key for any kind of, any kind of development in this county.
Right.
Right, is broadband.
And I think, Mr...
And to hear, to hear that it was, that the discussion is about the backbone, I thought we already had that.
Well, we do, but what they're talking about is there's going to be upgrades of five and so.
But I can imagine, given two companies' money to build two backbones or upgrade, and we still, we don't have last miles. There's not a house that has it because of it. That's what, that's, anyway, that's my opinion.
That's, that's the purpose of having the meeting to the end of this month, so we can get Shintel and some others that are interested to take.
It's expensive. They don't want to do it.
Well, but they're, they're talking different.
With our grant money, though, that's where I hesitate.
No, but you're talking about other things as well. I'm just saying we need to hear them out and see if we can form a coalition of people that are interested in doing this and moving ahead. We can't keep...
When you give one company millions of dollars to build a backbone, you would have hoped that they would have brought millions of dollars to the table and said, we're going to stop building it and using it. That's where I'm, we had, we had a bad apple, right? We had a bad experience, and we still haven't.
That's what we'll hear at the end of this month.
Right.
At this part.
Is there any other old business? Or the new business, anything? All right, Administrator's Report, is there anything that Amity wants us to know?
Yeah, just...
I apologize, I jumped back.
We have three.
Three, okay. Do we have a public comments at this time?
All honor.
Thanks, but I'll reserve my comments until after the council comes back with its analysis.
Clyde Humphrey?
Gentlemen, I hope that you will forgive me if I am blunt. I am tired of repeatedly hearing the six of you argue about not having a vision, the inadequacy of the planning commissioners, one thing or another, and you keep batting it back and forth and not taking action. The six of you were elected by our citizens to be the governing body of this county. You have the responsibility to establish the vision, to make sure that our planning commissioners are trained. So let me address a couple of specifics. You have the power. We've given you the authority. You need to take action. As far as the planning commissioners are concerned, each one of you should direct the commissioners that you have nominated to get the damn training.
Watch the language, please.
I'm sorry. I apologize. If the commissioners have not gotten their training, it's your fault. As far as the vision is concerned, you just recently approved the comprehensive plan, which contains a vision. Now, if that's not the vision that you wanted, why did you approve it? Why didn't you make changes? Now, what I, first, I would like to say I commend you for directing staff to solicit nominations for a planner. That's a very good move. But I would like to suggest that you need to provide, whoever you eventually hire as a planner, you need to provide them the vision. And so I would suggest that each one of you take a pen to paper within the next week and write down what you think the vision of this county should be, the vision for this county for the next five, ten, fifteen years. Give those to Liz within a week. Ask Liz to consolidate them and bring them back to you at your next meeting for your review. You can make changes to it, or you can, after you've made changes, you can approve it as a planning document, as a, as a vision that you can initially give to a planning director or that you can give to staff and say, this is the direction that we want to go. But it is your responsibility to establish that direction, and there's no reason that you cannot do it within the next two weeks. Thank you.
Stuart Parlett?
You guys don't care for a button hat, though, do you? They say in the army it's better to wear it than carry it. So leave them to you. I'm Stuart Parlett, and I live at six fifty-four Agent Ben Road. I've got a problem with chickens. I call the, I raise cucumber tomatoes. Been doing it for years. Seventeen inches to twenty-three, weighs over three pounds. Well, the chickens ate up forty of them this year. I had a vet with a guy. I had a prime tomato that's growing. It was almost twenty-six inches, and chickens got it. I called the sheriff's office on the second June or July. The animal caretaker, or control lady came out, she took pictures. Chicken poop on the walk, carport, tomatoes eaten. So she said, you gotta, I'll go back and tell them, leaving a note on the door. She don't have no teeth. She's carrying a weapon. She told me she's more afraid of a cat than she was a dog. I worked with dogs for thirty-four years, but I've never seen anybody train attack cats. Anyway, I don't know what she did, so she said it comes under the county administrator. I called the county administrator, went ten calls, and nothing has happened. It was zero seven thirty yesterday morning. They're still in the garden. I don't know why it comes under zoning. I don't know why I think Sheriff Pressgraze took it, the Animal Care Control, making the board, and put it under law enforcement. I don't understand why they carry a weapon. They could need a taser or something to catch animals with, or a shotgun if they needed in the vehicle. But they've turned this thing here into a starting point to be, go or to be a deputy. The one that came out to me is she's already in jail doing something. So I think the Board should, should look at that hard. If it's not a state-controlled, why does, they went years ago with one guy, Mr. Good, was the animal control warden, and he handled it by himself. You could hire someone for thirty thousand a year to get a vehicle drive, which is another five thousand if you don't have no gas stuff for it. So why doesn't it come under zoning? So I don't know what, I don't know what the thing is, but the chickens have tossed the coin, and they've elected to receive. So Mr. Marlin, Mr. Henry, Mr. Winchester, Mitch Remington, Harrison Richardson, and two others will be, be running the front line next year. I'm putting a sign on the garden. I'm not going to fence it. I've been there fifty years next month. The guy behind me, he's EMT. I don't know, he works for the county. He's never come to me and said, I'm so-and-so, I'll be your new neighbor. I can get along with anyone. So I don't want to hear no complaints next year if chickens come up missing. If I would had a dog and went back there and killed forty of his chickens, the control warden would have come and put the dog to sleep, right? Same way with the cat back here in the field. That's my complaint. You can do what you want with it. The Board will know, and whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parlett.
Like I say, I don't know why it comes under zoning. I know it's not a law. It's ordinance. That person should have went to the door and said, you violated this ordinance. You got ten days to correct it, or I'm going to come back and charge you. I mean, if they're going to, if they are control officer, they're an officer of the law, right? I mean, it shouldn't, it shouldn't take, well, the second of July up until now. They completed these up to, I even took the big ones off at the bottom, put them up eighteen inches, and they still reached back and get them. I know it's a small complaint, but it's not to me.
Thank you, Mr. Parlett. Yeah, we don't enter into a discussion about it, but we'll, we'll talk to the county administrator about what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming.
There are other speakers.
No more, no more speakers? Okay, we go to Administrator's Report.
The only thing I have is just a reminder that this Thursday, the seventeenth, is the annual Public Officials Dinner, virtual dinner with Shinnon Valley Electric.
Mr. Ward, I...
Yeah, and you need, if you haven't done so already...
Pretend they're going to have something brought to our house, Peter.
I wanted to ask, I wanted to clarify, how, how they will have a virtual dinner?
I think it's just a meeting.
Zoom.
I think it's just a, I mean...
It'd be different if they delivered food, but that is...
But, but if you, if you come out there, know that you're coming, because they've asked me several times, so I don't know.
That way it's that free, yeah.
You won't throw an email on it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just go, all you have to do is just watch, pretty simple.
That's it.
Thank you. They may send us something.
I guess, I don't know.
Anything more from the Administrator's Report? Okay, we have Supervisor's Time. We'll start with you, Mr. Vaughn.
Well, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. I respect the gentleman's concern about the potatoes. This is his heart and soul and that. I know we don't bring a discussion up on that, but I would hope that neighbors do. If I get chickens on my place, got one, one of two things that I do. First hand, do a contact the owner. And if they didn't take any action on it, I bring a four-ten out. And that's the direction to take. And we're in a rural area, but chicken provides a good meal, along with the potatoes. But anyhow, I do appreciate any comments we had here tonight. Concern that I have, though, is defining the true vision. And the visions we have are so general that you really got a hint for them. And going back to the comment you made earlier about that we ended up to be the cabin capital of the world, or not the world, of state, maybe the world one day. Point, if you look at what drove that, it was a vision of those owners. Think about it. It's a vision, the vision of those owners, the entrepreneurs that drove that and how we become. Because we didn't mandate anything in this county to encourage it. Did we, or did we not? Think about it. And just, just think about that. It's a vision of the entrepreneurs that generate that, and then we see the end results of it from the taxation system. It's revenue generating. So to me, that's where it has to always start. And good for certain. But I'm proud of being on the Board. This COVID thing, I think come November, we'll be all over with, but I might be wrong. Everybody have a good evening.
Okay, Mr. Foltz. I'll do at least two points.
Four years ago, I said, well, five years ago, when I got on the Board here, there were a couple of things that we needed here in the county. Not one of them has been built. First one, we need some decent restaurants here in this county. That's one thing. We need a Home Depot or a Lowe's or something like that. If you want more than ten, to be before, you guys got to go to Front Row or Harrisburg to get them. And, and we need motels. You know, that's, and I didn't realize it, but we have the second biggest tourist attraction in the state of Virginia, and that's the Lick Red Caverns. That's the next biggest tourist attraction under Busch Gardens, believe it or not. And there's no reason, if we can't have some of those, those amenities here, I mean, it's unreal. And that's something that, that's been a vision of mine since I've been on this Board, and we never got, even a inkling of none of the three.
You think we talked to Lowe's?
I've talked to Lowe's and Home Depot.
Is this Supervisor's Time? You finished?
Thank everybody for coming.
I think, Mr. Vaughn, I think, I think both of you guys are wrong, two things. One is, I, I think that, I think cabins is quite something. It's, it's, but it's, it's not like Virginia Beach where you, where you want to go down, you know, you want to go down as many times as you can go down. But I, I don't think, I don't think the cabin owners, I don't think there's a vision. I think they just, they look over, it's just like Mr. Parlett, and it's a shame, you know, because there's things going on across your boundary line there. But, you know, Sheriff Lucas was just looking over at somebody that had a cabin that was making some money. And I think we follow, I think we follow the money, and that's why the restaurants aren't here. And the motel, we have motel, and it's basically closed. I mean, the golf, the little golf thing there is, you know, is defunct. And I, I think that, I think the vision, vision comes in a different way. I think that we, we have, I think you had a vision when you, when you decided to go into business. Sorry, you, that was, that was it. It wasn't because there was a demand for it, right? That, I mean, there, there was, you saw it, nobody else did. The cabins, that was, nobody came and, and had a meeting, I don't think, with poultry house owner, with landowners, and let's, let's, let's meet and talk about cabins. You know, let's meet and talk about cabins. I, I think it works the other way. I think, I think, I think, I think we need to understand as to, as to how successful counties that are somewhat like the Page. Page is very, very unusual and unique. And, and I think we need, I think we do, that's where the whole notion of a professional planner comes into play is how do, how do people in the situations such as we're in here, you know, what happens to make it, to make it grow into something really good? That's, that's my comment. I want to thank everyone who's on this country.
I want, I want to disagree with you, while we're in this meeting, but I want this to be public. You, you said you didn't agree with what we said, okay? But I'm going to disagree with the comment you made, because you've been an educator all your life. I've been an entrepreneur all my life that generates a vision, okay? But that vision is generated and succeeded through ROI. Through ROI. Not if you're aware of that, what drives that, but that's the vision you have. That's what the vision this county needs. And you'd have more tax dollars to build the things you want in this county. You'd have the dollars to build a jail if you needed it. And you'll call a jail, in your, in your opinion, you'll call it a jail, but it's a recondition of the mental states that people are in in this county. Call it wherever you want to, but it comes down to common sense, and it comes down to ROI. So I just want to make it clear for you.
Since, since...
And we'll differ on that.
No, it's not bickering.
No, no, I said we'll differ. You and I will differ on that.
I think we're saying the same thing. The return on investment is, if you throw people into a, into a cement hole like we have over here as a jail because they have done something wrong, and they, they're going to get a year in jail or three years in jail, you get a return on that investment, of that poultry investment, that is more trouble down the road. And what you do is you invest in, you invest in things that, that, that really add to the, to the value of everyone's life here in the county, which your company does, and which every cabin now does, because people realize that they can make money at that. There weren't cabins here.
It's called employment, too.
But there's a reason why there's not... Well, there's a major, big hotel, beautiful hotel, but there's no hotels really that, that function at a high level, and there are no restaurants that function at a high level.
Talk to restaurant owners and ask them why there's not more, because you've got to support those entities. It's just like if you got a Lowe's or a Home Depot, you've got, the participants in this county have to support. Not run, not run to Harrisburg or Winchester or Front Row. You've got to spend your money in your own community, and no, no builder, no corporate entity is going to do that, not unless they see the ROI. Period.
Can't make people not go to Harrisburg.
Well, I know that. I just can't, you don't know the reason why it's on here. I'm just checking my logic now.
Be quiet. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and I think we made good strides with the intent of the Berkeley Group and now the intent to get this done in stages, because I'm afraid that that was not moving forward. So I think the Board made a good decision. I'd like to move that forward, and that will make up a better opportunity for our citizens and better opportunity for businesses. Thank you all for coming up.
Mr. Humphrey, I totally agree with your statement tonight. Because, you know, God's word says, a man without vision will perish, and we've never had any in this county. And, you know, I got elected four years and nine months ago, and was kind of, my ears pinned back, I'm a herald guy. And two of the top professionals in the business development world came in as the Cardinal Authority and did a study, and we ignored it. We totally ignored it. And Brian Shaw is the Economic Development Director for the City of Harrisburg, a good personal friend of mine. And Greg is now the President of the Shinnon Valley Partnership, was the two guys that came in and did that study. And it was totally ignored of what we needed in this county. Because they did a study and took a look at where we're at, where we need to be, and what it takes to get us there, and we still got records of it. And we did absolutely nothing with it. And there's so many things that could be done in this county.
And there's so many things that could be done in this county and they don't have a hotel in this county, I'd say, and I'd tell you that right now. I haven't been to Menzel, I'm sure it's nice, but I ain't paying that for a 200-year-old hotel either. But anyway, that's just my opinion. But I totally agree with your statement tonight. And it, it rubber, it's where the rubber meets the road, you know? I'm an outside sales guy. I couldn't go sell cars for a living because I can't sit in that building and wait for somebody to come and bring me an opportunity. I'm going to get the truck and go see them and make my own opportunity and that's called entrepreneurship. And we've never done that in this county and, and that's why we're in the shape we're in. But with the COVID that's going on right now, and I think it'll be over in November, one or another two, Mr. Vaughn. And the, the thing that, that, the opportunities right now in this county, people's wanting to get out of cities, they're wanting to get to rural and, and we got to have where they can sit here and they can make six digits sitting in their bedroom working in, in for a federal officer as, or a contractor in DC. But we got to have the tools to be able to buy that. As far as the Lowe's or a Home Desperate, you've got Snowball's Chance and Haiti, those buildings come here because Gillum's Lumber couldn't stay in business for crying out loud, all right? The Co-op, bless your heart, that they're doing the best they can do. We had Gilly's Lumber in Stanley, that, that couldn't, couldn't sustain. And it's, it's a numbers game, it's return on investment, period. There, you know, Ramto would never think about putting a location in Page County, all right? You'd start, if you couldn't make a business here. But we do need to define who we are and then we need to create it. Roll up our service leaves and go to do that four-letter word called work and make it happen. And I would like to invite all of you personally to an event at Mount Carmel Car Show this weekend. Bring your mask if you like it, if you don't, stay six foot away from me. We will have COVID signs up and we will be announcing the regulations. But you know, it amazes me, we were in Myrtle Beach last week and the condos were full and people were in oceanfront condos and spending all weekend in condos. And I'm like, are you kidding me? And then you see people riding down the road with their windows rolled up and their mask on. Who are they protecting? And it, 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 the whole thing behooves me, is there a situation, issue, issue without a doubt? But I, I think it's, Albert Einstein said, in the middle of difficulty lies opportunity. And we're in the middle of difficulty right now and I think this is the time for Page County to get busy about what we're doing and get some economic growth in this county. And you know what? It's not going to look like it did 30 years ago. It's not going to look like it's been 50 years ago. We got to make some changes. And, and that often is not popular, but anyway, y'all can make it to Mount Carmel Car Show this year. It starts 10 o'clock to 3 o'clock. We're probably expecting 150 to 200 cars coming in. We have got stickers, so we're counting how many people we've got on site coming and going. And we're going to do our best to, to meet the COVID-19 guidelines and we are not charging our drivers a registration fee this year. We're not asking our sponsors for any money. We've raised over $100,000 for that show in the last 11 years and we're going to give back the community. And I just think it'll be a great time, so if y'all can make it, we'd love to see y'all Saturday. And God bless you all and thank you for coming out.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a lively discussion tonight because we had a painting and I just wanted to add on the point of interest for some maybe is that I, I may be guilty of starting the surge on the cabin capital designation because in the seventies, I built my first cabin here and I was working at the government, with the government at the time and I had the vision that because it was uneven gas rationing, that people with one tank of gas could get here and get back home. And sure enough, I started doing very well with, had it renting out cabins and people were coming and they could get here on one tank of gas and get back home. And so sometimes it's just looking at the opportunity in front of you and seizing that opportunity. Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much.
We've got to put three minutes in a row. We've got to click timer.
Goodbye.